Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
First. Qualls first, Anderson second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We'll go to citizens comments.
None denied.
Thank you, sir. Go to the approval of the minutes from the February 11th, 2020 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
First. Blade.
Second.
Second, Schulist. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, guys. Going to new business. Item one. Final plat for Wynwood Park subdivision, phase one, map 21, parcel 61.24, 21 proposed lots, 7.97 acres. Owner Matt Biata Boulevard Building Group LLC. Staff comments. Upon completion of water authority of Dixon County requirements, staff recommends approval of the final plat. Final plat shall not be signed until requirements are met. Staff recommends approval of final plat comments. An action by the planning commission is either a motion for approval or disapproval of the final plat in Wynwood Park subdivision, phase one. Micah, do you want to just read in? Any staff comments that you have or notes from the plat? Just for reference.
Okay, the only comment that we have for water authority that would need to be addressed is, before signatures, they did have the fencing for the drip field as well as the step system area that needed to be complete before signing that. I spoke with Mr. Rogers from Water Authority today. He said that it would not be anything that would keep the plat from being approved tonight, but it would be something that would just be, once that fence is up, it would be signed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
First.
Second.
Burks, Jenkins, discussion? This is going to be repetitive to say, but I'm just going to ask a question. We were briefly talking about it as of plans for future cluster mailboxes. And the man that might give us a better feel for it may have just walked in, but welcome.
Third, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what was the question?
Is the developer here tonight or are you guys back there, a representative?
I'm the representative from Boulevard Luke Biata.
Thank you, sir. Could you state your name for me?
Luke Biata.
I'm sorry. Luke Biata, yes, sir. Luke, have you guys been approached yet by the postal service about cluster mailbox on this yet?
No.
So, Mr. Potter, some recent neighborhoods that are finishing houses now that were approved without any kind of cluster mailbox system. The post office is now denying any mail to the residents that are moving in as homes are finishing and requiring the cluster mailbox system. And so my question was just, how do we proactively plan for it? As some of these new things are going to come in, if they are going to be affected by it, dedicate, because we did all this forward thinking to make sure we had a layout of how we wanted it to look and what parking was going to be. And now all these are probably going to have to be retroed, it seems like. So what, I guess what is it?
Yes, so are they saying that they're not going to honor what we've previously designed?
Well, no, these ones were way before it ever caught wind, and so there's no plan in place. And so now the developer, Otter Creek, is the one actively right now going to have to find a spot to put this cluster mailbox when nothing was planned for. If that makes sense.
When did we get notice of this? When did we learn that they were doing?
I think the first resident just moved officially. We put ours in place a couple of months ago.
Right.
Back, I believe, in June or July of last year that we had that vote.
Yeah, I remember that vote.
But the first residents are just moving into Otter Creek and find out your mailbox is decorative. You won't get any mail in, is what the US Postal told them.
That's not good. So, we've got to figure out a way to remedy that. And so is this through development, Mr. Bureau?
It just-
I'm representing, yeah. It's on our radar in terms of the potential that we will need the cluster mailboxes. We do have a significant amount of green space that we can incorporate a cluster mailbox in for that.
So how many developments is this going to affect?
We've got two final plats tonight. And I would say Pinnacle Place, I'd say there's probably five or six that are going to be.
We've got several that are either approved, up for approval tonight, or recently approved. And then some that we have future phases that are coming up pretty soon that will probably be affected as well.
And there's some neighborhoods in Franklin that have 20 houses finished that they're making them retro. And people who are getting mail in mailboxes aren't anymore.
So we've got, so the issues, I guess, the ones that haven't been approved yet, we can address before final approval, but how many are we talking about that are retroactive that are going to create?
Depending on what we go into as far as what is retroactive, we've got four or five that construction plans have already been approved and built out. And they're at the final plating stage. And then we have probably another three or four that I'm aware of that will probably be affected that have already been platted or partially platted for that.
In Franklin, there's some that have, people live in them, have been getting mailbox, mail in their mailbox, and they're having to come back and retro. So it might even affect like Pepper Tree or things like that that haven't hit yet. So maybe are we safer putting in an ordinance saying if you do install one of these, that it needs to come to us before it's installed, you know, to be reviewed or, you know?
Right, right. Well, I think obviously we're going to have to address each one of these. We're going to have to remedy it before we give final plat approval.
So do we vote tonight and handle that via staff? And if it needs to come back from revisions?
Yeah, we can do it contingent upon staff addressing that problem.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's fairly material. They've got to get mail, right?
Yeah, that's right. It's a big deal, huh?
So do we need to take back our first and second so we can amend?
Yeah, I think so. Mr. Jenkins, if you will move your second.
I do remove my second.
Mr. Burks, if you'd be interested in making a new motion for us.
I would. I'd make a motion to approve conditioned upon the staff approving a modification for a cluster mailbox that does meet the current ordinance in regards to the cluster mailboxes.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, sir. We'll go into discussion first and second. Mr. Anderson?
My discussion in the previous meetings, we've talked about this. It's not just a cluster mailbox, it's a cluster mailbox system. Ever so many houses, you've got to have ever so many houses. And other, I can't get it volume.
There you go, if the green light, there you go.
Cluster mailbox systems with parking and so many mailboxes, ever so many feet from the home. So, in old times, maybe you did a cluster system when they first came in the subdivision. But what I understand, the new regulation is so many feet from each home. So the word "system," I think, needs to be incorporated in your resolution so that we can have Micah and them make it conform to whatever the postal system says.
Well, we passed an ordinance and changed our regulations in requirements of what the postal office said and then also some higher requirements that we suggested. So it should be captured if it meets our requirements there. Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you, Mr. Biata. New business item two. Final plat revision of lot two, Whispering Winds subdivision, map 47, parcel 6701. 14 proposed lots, 10.47 acres. CHPWC Steve Murray owners. Staff comments, staff recommends approval and final signatures of final plat. Mr. Todd, you're welcome.
We have the same problem with the mailboxes with this one, too?
To be determined.
Hasn't come up yet, but I'm willing to work with whatever y'all require of it.
And that's what, it's so subjective, you don't know what it is. So it's safer to add the contingency that Mr. Burks added in case it does pop up that we're ready, prepared to address it.
I'd make a motion that this be approved based upon staff comments conditioned upon the subdivision meeting any requirements under our mailbox statute and any requirements under the United States Postal Service.
Second. First, Burks. Second, Kelly. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Thank you.
Item three. Site plan for Fairview Assisted Living Facility, map 42, parcel 123.06 and 123.07. 3.5 acres, zoned commercial general. Marlin and Gina Cunningham CO, trustee owners. Staff comments. Applicant has requested two variants from the City of Fairview zoning ordinance and design review manual. The two items are, number one, the applicant has requested a variance from the parking requirements found in zoning article 11-103.1.6, requiring one space per unit and additional half space per unit as future growth. The provided site plan for approval displays the minimum of one space per two rooms and additional space per shift employee. Required 38 plus 19 future expansion, proposed 40. Item two, the applicant has requested a variance from the right-of-way sidewalk requirements found in design review manual 5-106.5.1. Applicant has requested to pay into the sidewalk fund in lieu of the required sidewalks. Current rate, 781 a square foot. T-DOT Region 3, 2019, AUP 70101.01, which is roughly 15,042 and 6 cents. Combination plat to be recorded prior to construction. Open issues regarding site details and plan modifications shall be completed prior to pre-construction meeting. Upon approval of water authority of Dixon County requirements, all WADC plan modifications will be completed prior to pre-construction meeting. Staff recommends approval of site plan. We have a representative, could state your name for me, sir?
Elon.
John Keelan, thank you, sir.
Chairman Butler, if you will, make note that we do have a letter stating both of those variance requests and then as well some paperwork showing for one of those.
Thank you, sir. So we have two letters printed next to you there stating the variances. And then also printed there are some other municipalities' parking requirements for assisted living homes for representation or comparison.
I have a question for Mr. Potter. Mr. Potter, is it appropriate that we grant these variances from this board? Or is it more appropriate to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Talking to Kevin here, are they requesting a variance of our zoning ordinance?
I think it would be more design review, design review manual. Would you say, Micah, the parking and the sidewalk?
Sorry, the parking is mentioned in the zoning article, but specifically states that the request can be brought forward to the planning commission in that manner.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Keelan, correct?
Yes.
What's the thought process behind requesting the variances?
Can you be more specific, please?
In the two letters here, it simply says that you're requesting variances, but there's no reason for the actual request. Why did you request the variance?
On the sidewalk variance, you want to? In regards to the sidewalk variance, it would be effectively a sidewalk to nowhere. That's hence just paying into the sidewalk fund, the city could choose where the sidewalks.
And the parking spaces?
It wouldn't clearly define exactly what the requirement was. So in discussions previous, it was, we needed more parking. So we pulled together some data for other counties to kind of reference from there because we didn't really have anything to go off of.
If you didn't have anything to go off of, where are we getting our requirements for this? The zoning article 11-10316?
What is your zoning requirement specifically for assisted living parking?
So according to staff comments, it says the requirements found in zoning article 11-103.1.6 requiring one space per unit and an additional half space per unit as future growth. So in this situation, the required would be 38 plus 19 for future expansion and the proposed is 40. So be 18 short.
Typically in assisted living business-
18, I'm sorry, my math is wrong.
Typically in assisted living business, you have less than 8% of residents that actually drive to the community. So that would be one, you know, being involved in opening several of these in Williamson County and surrounding counties that are real close by. All, you know, three to one or two to one. So that's kind of why we thought, you know, might be lenient to.
I think our-
How many units will this have?
Total 60.
60 units?
First phase will be 38, so that's what we're building right now or what we're proposing to build. Parking, 40 total spaces of what we have right now. So 38 total units, 40 spaces for first phase.
So are we, Mr. Sullivan, are we going by the nursing homes? Is that on our list? Is that what we're going by?
Zoning ordinance, we have article 11, which goes into that section, so 11, 103, 1. And then number six, it's age restricted dwelling, age restricted dwelling units. It's kind of, it's separate, it's not on the chart at all. It's on separate spot, which is where the one space per unit comes from. And when speaking with several of the people working with the applicant, that's where we found was the best spot to come to in our regulations for that.
I have a question. How many employees do you anticipate?
Have roughly, first phase will have around 20 employees.
20?
Five employees, full-time employees.
But how many staffed at one time?
On one shift, on day shift, you're looking at no more than eight staff, including your managers.
So, Micah, to clarify, the ordinance of the one plus a half space is specifically for age restricted living, correct?
That is correct.
So we've already, as a city, gone through and determined that this, for this specific situation, is the best parking space ratio.
That is what is in the zoning ordinance that was adopted in 2019.
Okay, perfect.
But it doesn't specifically state assisted living though, correct?
I guess the question is, is that more, was the intent of that being more of a retirement community? Or was that assisted living? Because they are two different things.
I think that's part of why it allows the board to make that variance for them. I believe that's why that ability is there to come before the commission and request that.
I see the point. When we're talking about assisted living, not everybody's driving at that point, which is one reason they're kind of in assisted living. But that's not 100%, of course. We require one to one, they're asking one to three, I think, meet them in the middle at one to two, plus one for maximum number of staff per shift. I think that's a fairly good compromise in this situation. Those are my thoughts.
I was contacted prior to ask about this. I think, like you're saying, Mr. Burks, is we've never seen this before. This application's never been put in place. It kind of says nursing home on one space, it says one space for each employee and then one space for every two patients. So that would be, that would be one parking space per room, which is two patients. And so they provided us some, and I'm not sure when that ordinance was put in place by us as well. It was probably a while ago. But so Nashville is two people to one parking space. I'm sorry, that was Spring Hill.
Nashville's one to three.
Spring Hill is three beds for one space. Nashville's two beds to one space. And I haven't found Brentwood yet in here.
Nashville, Tennessee, Davidson County is one space per three beds.
Sure.
Brentwood is one to three plus your additional employee parking. And then Spring Hill's one to two.
So when it was brought up before, that's what I said. The best thing to do is kind of bring us what have other people done in the area that do have assisted living, that have realized parking and, you know, how has it worked? And they may be more used to the requirements because they may have one or two where this will be our first one.
Mentioned there would be additional phases. Will there be additional parking as well in those phases?
What we look to do is to build all of our parking in phase one. So we would have 40, around 40 plus or minus parking spaces for 38 apartments. So first phase, but we would like for that to park the whole program at 60 units. So if it was one to two, you're looking at 30 units, we would still have 40. I serve on the Tennessee Healthcare Board of Directors and we've had this conversation multiple times over the last several years for several different reasons. But for one reason, assisted living has changed so much in the last 10 years. We're able to care for residents a lot longer than we were 10 years ago. And we've noticed a rapid decline in driving over the last six, seven, eight years in assisted livings. Say our numbers are less than 10%, you're really looking at 6, 5, 6% of residents that truly still drive their vehicles. And the numbers in Tennessee is a little bit less than that. I feel that it's fair. At the end of the day, our goal is to serve our residents. And we feel like, other than special events, will be the only time that we would not have adequate parking.
Micah, just to be clear again, so there's no specific ordinance that we have for assisted living specifically?
Looking here at the chart, we have special person in group care, which this does fall under. But the three options for that are daycare facilities for elderly persons. It would not be just a daycare, it is full-time living. Daycare centers and then nursing homes. Speaking with the applicant, this would not be a nursing home because of the care that is not being given. So the only thing that I saw that would be fitting outside of that would be the age restricted, which lessens it from some of our other residential requirements.
Is this something that maybe we should consider adding to the ordinances to clarify this kind of stuff in the future?
I would say yes.
Anything you ever add to clear something up is always a good thing.
I just don't want to get in the habit of having to give a variance, thank you, every time someone comes through here to do something like this. So just to be fair to everybody who comes after them, that we have some sort of standard.
My feeling is that we should set our standard generally with whatever the other protocol, with the standard protocol in the sister cities here that have experience with assisted living. If it's working elsewhere, it should work here. That's my opinion.
If I could, one other thing, we're also serving memory care residents. So out of our licensed beds, not all of them will be allocated for assisted living. So when you're dealing in memory care-
Will, sir, Ms. Keelan, make sure you're speaking to that mic for me.
Sorry.
Thank you, sir.
When you're dealing with Alzheimer's and dementia, you know, 0% of your residents will be driving. So a number percentage of these beds will be, will be memory care beds, too, just to-
What percentage will that be?
It's going to determine on our lease-up stage. So we've got an option for about 24 total units in there, so out of your 60. Would leave you with about roughly one parking spot per assisted living bed.
Any additional discussion on the parking?
First thing, I don't know how we can give a variance if we don't have anything to give a variance from.
There's a reference of similar, yeah.
We've got that. But shouldn't we, instead of giving a variance, just come up with whatever we need to make it so we don't, like they've said, so we don't have to do this every time? And if they're successful, this one, we're close enough to Nashville and this surrounding area. I can't believe this is going to be the only one that we ever have in this city. And instead of having them to come in and figure out what they can get a variance on, if they knew upfront, this is what the code is for this, then they, in their planning stages, they would be better served as being able to plan something. They would know what they're looking at. So instead of a variance, I would rather, I don't know, we may not be able to do it tonight. We may have to let the staff come back with something. But I would rather come up with an actual statute or a code for this as opposed to a variance of something that actually, from what he's hearing, we don't have a specific code for assisted nursing. So how can we give a variance to something we don't even have an actual code for? I guess that's my question.
The language is broad, be it broad, could still apply in the application. And I think like Ms. Quall said, if tonight this is what we vote on, then that would be setting the precedent and it would be proper of us to have staff go ahead and correlate new language and that we would be able to vote on it in the future. And the staff comments, you know, recommend approval of site plan. So I guess the staff felt that it was, that the part, the number of spaces were adequate. Would you, is that fair, staff? I don't want to put words in your mouth there.
Looking at the required number and what was brought to us, I do not have any opinion. I have not done any study on what we should and shouldn't do. Going strictly by the regulations we have in the variance request I was given, that's what I brought forward. And this approval is based on that variance.
Any additional discussion on parking questions?
I'm just thinking, what would it look like to meet in the middle? Between the current requirement of age restricted and our- Between the current requirement of the age restricted and our, the one and a half spaces? And maybe just do, instead of a half a space, one and a quarter spaces, which would be ten additional spaces in this situation, if you round up. So that would put it to forty-eight, which is what Commissioner Burks originally proposed whenever he was considering the employees that would be working there on a daily basis. I'm just shooting from the hip right now.
I think, to play devil's advocate, that would put us higher than the three municipalities local around us that have assisted living in place and, and have, have been through this conversation, and have discussed parking, and possibly changed based off of feedback of structures they've built of Nashville, Spring Hill, and Brentwood. So that would put it, like, I think Nashville, that would put us fifteen or twenty more parking spaces than what Nashville would require in assisted living.
And if I could, Nashville has, you know, they've developed more of these than any other, you know, county around. So I think that, I think one to two is really fair. I know my opinion don't, you know, help us a whole lot, but that's, I, I truly, you know, just being in the business, growing up in this business, and really, truly being in, in and out of these communities every single day, five days a week, I really, and, and you guys, if you drive by any assisted living during your daytime hours, you're going to have seventy-five percent of your parking lot empty. So...
So you're doing your calculations based on if it's one to two, then eighty beds?
Sixty beds.
We're at sixty. We, we, we felt like we had, you know, ten parking spots that we, we truly don't need, but we, we put them there.
So you gave an extra ten from your one to two ratio. Gotcha, okay.
Correct.
I'd like to recommend that we approve the variance for parking as set forth in this variance request by the staff.
If you, if, if that's your intention, you may be saying you, you have a motion for approval with the two variances. Is that correct? As, with staff comments?
Yes.
So a motion for approval with the two variances and sta- and acceptance of staff comments. So move, there's a first. Is there a second?
A second.
Anderson, Qualls. I did want to ask about the, the gravel drive access to the, to the pump station there. I just hate that we make, it have this elaborate entrance with curb, and then we have a gravel road twenty feet down from it, right onto Old Nashville again. So I don't know if there's any way to retire that interior, or...
The Water Authority actually specifically asked me to put it there, but there's plans for, in the future, coming back and developing that, that one acre parcel. And when that gets redev- or gets developed, I'm relatively certain that gravel drive will disappear, and their access will then meld with the site plan proposed at that time.
It just, I mean, it's going to, there's going to be gravel washout. They're going to track dirt when they visit it back out onto Old Nashville Road. It just...
Well...
It, you know...
I'm going to speak a little bit for the developer, and he may frown at me later, but we could pave in from the, into the right-of-way, or from the existing pavement to the right-of-way, which would help with the washout.
That's, I think, for appearance, for, because anything tracking on to Old Nashville, and then Old Nashville deteriorates, or, or gets, you know, penalized or hurt, is on us. And so I'd just hate to see us have a nice entrance and then a gravel road thirty feet down from it. So anything that could help. And is that, I guess that's for the Water Authority to be accessing the pump station for maintenance and stuff? And if anyone else has an opinion on that, just...
Good thinking.
You got the email on there.
I didn't see it.
There it is. Keith, we don't have that site plan on the PowerPoint. Have a motion on the floor, so I won't drag too long. If anybody else has any discussion?
I kind of like the idea of having at least paved the first portion of it, so it does at least match. Not asking to pave the whole thing, but...
So do we want to remove and amend, or do we want to vote for an amend, amendment? If anyone wants to make that motion. Make it as difficult as possible.
Let's vote on our, on our amendment. And then we'll vote again on the part.
We would need to be in our initial motion for approval, yeah.
Yeah, let's vote on that first, then we'll go ahead with the second one.
If we vote on the initial, we'll bypass our, we wouldn't have the, we wouldn't be able to vote the new one in.
Oh, oh, we wouldn't?
Right. Needs to be in our initial motion.
Oh, we have to back up.
The easiest thing is probably just to rescind your second and the original motion, then...
Qualls, if you want to rescind.
I rescind my second.
And Mr. Anderson? So now we entertain a motion, including all that.
Start with the driveway, so we don't forget that part.
I make a motion that we approve the request for variance, subject to staff recommendations, and asphalting the utility access.
Right-of-way.
And right-of-way.
So a motion for approval of this with the two variances and the staff comments, and paving the, the maintenance access point in the right-of-way. Correct?
Correct.
That's first.
A second.
Second still on Anderson and Qualls. Any additional discussion before I pull this? Any questions from you guys? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll move into bonds and letters of credit. Fab line reclamation bond in the amount of thirteen thousand will expire April 12th, 2020. Staff comments is action by the planning commission would be a recommendation to, to call the bond, if not renewed by April 12th, 2020.
Motion to call the bond if not renewed by April 12th, 2020.
Second.
Burks, Blade, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item two, Pennant Place subdivision, phase one and two, performance bond in the amount of five hundred ninety-nine thousand. There's a little typo in there, but it's five hundred ninety-nine, be correct. Five hundred ninety-nine thousand. Staff comments, motion to call the performance bond if not renewed by April 26th, 2020.
Motion to call the performance bond if not renewed by April 26th, 2020.
Second.
Burks, Blade, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Number three, Pepper Tree Co. Performance Bond. Sorry. Pepper Tree Co. Performance Bond, the amount of three hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred, expire on April 11th, 2020. Staff comments, developer wishes to have a reduction in performance bond related to installation of sidewalks and street trees. Based upon site inspection, staff recommends a new performance bond amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred. The recommended action from the staff would be a motion for approval or disapproval of the reduced bond at the two hundred eighty-three seven hundred amount.
Motion to approve the new bond of two hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for the new performance bond.
Second.
Burks, Jenkins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Item four, Sweet Rice Springs Letter Credit in the amount of forty-five thousand will expire on April 16th, 2020. Staff comments, motion to call the letter of credit if not renewed by April 16th, 2020.
Motion to call the letter of credit if not renewed by April 16th, 2020.
Sir, first.
Second.
Blade, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Micah, I'm sorry to, to hope you didn't have any comments for us as we blew through those. Any additional comments?
It is just fun.
All right. Reports for discussion and information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
Two things off of what's been mentioned tonight. The central mail systems, we talked about last year, I feel like I'm way loud. We talked about those last year, and I believe the wording that we put in is where required by the USPS, and then our requirements on top of their regulations. Where we are now starting to see these now be required, is that something that we need to look at the requirements on? And I guess that's a question for attorney as well as commission. As, instead of being where required, now we know they are required. Is that something we need to just go ahead and completely bring into, and then set us a number of houses that we say have to be, or even start anything more than a two-lot subdivision? How, how would be the best for us to handle that? And then how would y'all like for it to be worded with that?
Does that need to go into the design review manual, or does that need to go up as a zoning ordinance?
It's in the zoning right now.
Okay.
Look, Commissioner Burks, at the language that we did. I think, I'm still a little unclear about what their requirements are. I, I mean, I don't know what they are.
It's the federal government. It's subject to change.
Right. It seems very subjective, like if it gets approved or doesn't get approved. So...
So would it make sense to take an ordinance up to the BOC stating that if a subdivision is required to retroactively install a cluster mailbox system, that it follow our current ordinance, as well as any United States Postal Service regulations?
Maybe. I think I'll get with Mr. Sullivan and look at the language of that ordinance.
Okay. And that's probably going to cause problems if these are almost built out and there's no space to put it, because they have to have parking and all of these fun things, so... At least it's not our fault. It's the Posta- Postal Service.
It's not our fault if they were getting mail one day and they're not getting it now. You know, I don't know what, what requirement they had that changed. So we need to get our hands around that.
My question on that situation, or a similar situation we might run into here, is who brings a complaint to the, to USPS in that situation? Would it be the city on behalf of its residents, or to be the residents individually?
I believe the person who's not getting mail.
And apparently, they're not very responsive. In Franklin, in a community called Lad Park, the homeowners sued the building, the builders, either to the developer, because they took some green space out and put their mailbox cluster system, concrete, just mailboxes out in the open that looks pretty terrible. I don't think that they won the lawsuit, but it, you know, there's a lot of unsatisfied people. And so trying to proactively get in front of it, so we don't have one post with twenty mailboxes, like we used to have back on Old Dirt Road, where everybody's at the end of the road for their post, you know. That's when you come into the neighborhood and you see this huge mailbox line, just trying to make it look better.
But I will, I will, we will definitely take a look at that.
If y'all could figure that out and get it to the BOC sooner rather than later, so we can, as Mr. Butler says, get ahead of this.
Yes, sir.
I do know that last year, when we brought forth those changes, that some other cities in the area looked at that and kind of started building their, theirs were around that, because they had been hit with, it has to be done, and they didn't have any standards as well. So I know that a couple of different places have mentioned that they're mirroring some stuff that we did. So being proactive on that, I think, was beneficial. It's just now it's here and...
The retro.
We will, we will be looking at that. My second thing, parking requirements. We've talked about what we need to change. I know we specifically mentioned assisted livings. In zoning, I think it was Article 11, that is a, a lot of the onsite parking. There's charts, there's words, there's paragraphs. There's some that say if this, then this, and so forth. Look through that. The zoning articles are on our website. If y'all will go through that sometimes, when you're just sitting around wondering what to do, and just want something fun to read, look through that. See what, what we have that you do and don't like. Think about communities around us and what we might see in the future, and what we can go ahead and put in that, so that we're not sitting here worrying about a variance. But we can go ahead and set what our standard is for some of these. Sometimes you can chill yourself in the details. We don't want it where every single building that might come out here, we have to have, because then we'll have a book of each requirement. But do go through that if you will. Look, see what you think makes sense, doesn't make sense, if anything needs to be added. Shoot me an email. We'll talk about it. I've got a couple of things that have already been brought to me, and probably the next month or the following, we will have a, a work session before the meeting, and I'll bring up several of those. We'll try to get those in draft form at that point. But that way, we can get some things continued moving, as we've said many times. Subregs, zoning articles, everything, they're, they're living documents. So the more we put into them and try to keep them current with where we are, the better they are for us and for, for the citizens that are coming here. I think that's all the talking I've got to do tonight.
And during your comments, I want to mention, I sent Micah a note a week or two ago about streetlights in the neighborhood. I flew into Nashville at night one night, saw all these beautiful streetlights in all these communities, and said, how do we still not require streetlights? And so I would like to see feedback from you guys, then bring us something to try and vote on new subdivisions requiring streetlights in them. I know, like, six or seven years ago, the city paid to install some streetlights around town. There were some dark areas, and some were even in some neighborhoods. And so trying in the future to have streetlights in communities.
Trying to figure out now the requirements of what, when, and where, and then the design requirements for that. If we wanted to set a specific, this is our streetlight, or kind of open it up to each development, how we wanted to do that. I know that the power company has a lot of their standards.
Yeah.
So we'd have to match that as well.
That's what I would follow suit of what, of their light.
That's probably what we're going to end up looking at the most, is what their requirements are, and then we'll go from there.
Thanks, sir. And feedback from anybody else, if you think I'm crazy or good, or...
Chairman Butler, what would you like said feedback and opinions?
Well, we'll, we'll, he'll bring it to us, and we'll discuss it and vote on it. But unless you say, no, we don't need streetlights, or, you know.
I'm currently the opinion, I love the fact that whenever I drive into my development at night and I park, I can look up and see the stars without any light pollution. It's one of my favorite things about living out here.
There's a very, very high restriction of lumens and they, and where they shine down. They don't shine up. So there are some pretty high standards on them of how they lay out. It's more to try and give ground light for the sidewalks and things like that.
I hear you. I'm just saying that if we're up to me, my neighbors wouldn't have floodlights outside their house. Like, that's how annoyed I am of lights in my community, trying to sleep at night, and I got my neighbor's floodlight shining into my bedroom window. So, yeah.
It sounds like you need to move.
So if you're asking for opinions, that's my opinion. And I wasn't talking about your old house.
All right. Anything else?
Uh...
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything for Micah?
One thing I'd say is, the parking for the marinas and boat docks that we have listed, I mean, I'm not sure, or the commercial sporting facilities is probably not sufficient for what we have in Fairview.
I thought the new MLS stadium was...
You would be, you would be surprised, and I'll just leave it there.
On marinas?
No, I don't think...
I don't know how many of those we have.
Hey, I mean...
Hey, Columbia once almost had a man-made lake.
Exactly. Columbia almost had a lake. We can, too.
Now, the potholes don't count. So outside of that...
Low blood. That hurts.
That hurt.
I do have another question, back to this mailbox saga. So does this, is this going to apply to established neighborhoods that have, like, a couple of empty lots?
No one knows.
But could it, do you think?
So Lad, Lad Park in Franklin, it was like section twenty-seven, and they came in and made that new section
Just the new section.
retrofit, yeah. Not the old communities, but you know, who knows? There's no guideline that anyone's following, and that's why it's such a mess, you know?
Is there a local USPS representative that the cities can partner with to learn?
What did, somebody told me today, they were in Murphysboro, and they won't call you back. You know, that was the, actually, that was the developer of Otter Creek. He called me and I asked him about it. And he said he plans on doing temporary in phase one and in phase... And he said he plans on doing temporary in phase one and in phase two, he wants to find a nice spot to do something nice. So he's trying to be proactive, but we need to make sure that we are seeing it to make sure it meets what we expect, you know.
And I think Mr. Anderson's correct in that it had to be so close to every home, which is even more...
Interesting as it plays with him. Anything else for Micah?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Last week you were talking about subdivisions that have been hanging out there since you were like in high school. What are we gonna do about that? You know, I mean, what do we do about that? There might be ones out there from grammar school.
As far as the postal stuff?
No.
Or just...
Just the subdivision not being done, just sitting there, you know, okayed in 2004, everything's changed. What are we gonna do?
So the question is, are they still, can they still be, if they're approved, can they be a force if they're a PUD? If they do come to us, they at least have to meet new construction requirements, new site plans, your curb and gutter, roads, sidewalks. So they would have to update to that, but does a PUD with smaller lots or whatever, is that still, could they just come in here and go, hey, we're ready to start now?
I know y'all are tired of hearing this, but we're looking into it and we're trying our best to find the answers. We throw a whole bunch of stuff at each other. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Kevin's here in the office. And if you are a fly on the wall to hear some of the things we throw back and forth to each other trying to figure stuff out, you would probably not be a fly on that wall anymore. There's a lot of stuff that we are working deep into, that as soon as you find one thing, it opens up four or five more trails into something else. We are working on some things. That is one of the specific things that we're looking at, because it's coming up to us weekly, monthly, of people coming in and saying, hey, this was approved back when, what is approved? And so we're having to go through now and see what phases of plans. And a lot of it is since 2004, 2005, the wording of our required documents have changed. So what was required then isn't now, what is now wasn't then. So trying to figure out where, what has been submitted applies to what we have currently.
Well, is there something that the Board of Commissioners or can put on these things where they, they go out of existence after two or three years, you know, if nothing's done, you know?
Expiration.
Expiration data, you know.
On, on construction plans, there are. On
On a PUD.
Some other development ideas, there are. We are looking at what would be the requirements for the planned overlays and planned developments.
Or at least if nothing's done, they have to come back to the planning commission or the board of commissioners or whoever. Just to, you know, what's going on, you know? What's happening?
We're, we're looking deep into it.
Because you've got stuff out there 15, 16 years.
Kind of like car tags, you have to come get them renewed.
I think part of it would be a determination of what constitutes you've started construction or, you know, how do you determine that?
You put a shovel in the ground. Yep, I started that thing.
Yeah, I mean, is it completion of, of those milestones? Okay, roads or sidewalks, complete infrastructure, you started building more, you know. And it, we started looking at the market right now, it's having some fun times. I hope no one's looked at their 401Ks. If we have another crash, then we have subdivisions that again will have started and maybe put on hold and run into this again. So I think we need to examine that. How do we put an expiration date on there? How do we make a determination whether it applies or not? Maybe it's within this timeframe, you would have to bring it up to the current codes. After that, it's just completely done. So I think there's a couple of things we can look at and we just need, again, something that needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Because there's, there's ones out there that have never been touched, right? I mean, just sitting there, just land.
And I'll add a little bit to that is a lot of the developments like that that have overlay district. I think the issue is that there's no expiration date on the zoning, because that zoning was set as part of the overlay district. As far as the site plan goes and all the details and standards, those would follow current standards. A lot of cases, it's a, it's an overlay district where the zoning is set based on that overlay district. So the setbacks, the development size of each lot of a subdivision, no sunset on that, but there would be a sunset on construction plans.
And even if you hang your hat on, you know, we just went to a comprehensive plan, you know, and what if some of those don't meet what our vision is anymore? Because it was 25 years ago and it was approved. Surely there's something that, and like Mr. Kelly said, maybe you give them a years of, two or three years to make a move or it's gonna expire or something. That way you just don't cut them off. I don't know the answer.
Because the statute gives them vesting rights.
That's tough.
We will.
First, there's always, when does latches apply? When have you slept on your rights?
It sounds, it sounds like we have two parts to the problem. If you allow me to use a metaphor, we got a leaking bucket and it's leaking onto the floor. Well, we gotta plug the bucket first, stop the leak, right? So if we have...
What's leaking? Open it up.
Do I need to explain the metaphor?
I'm not following.
Man, bad metaphor. So essentially right now, we, we don't have anything in the ordinance that's gonna prevent a plat that we approved today or a subdivision that we approved today that has some sort of statute of limitations or whatever term you want to throw on it. I feel like that should be the priority. Create something right now that has some sort of time limit on it for what we approved today or tomorrow or next month. And then go back and clean up the mess and see what we can do about the things that have already been approved and address those. Is that fair? Did I explain the metaphor?
Yeah, but I don't, but I think it's gonna be very difficult, because it's a zoning that's with the PUD, that's overlay of that land. I don't think that you can go back without rezoning the property. So that would take, that would take approval from the landowner to rezone it.
You almost have to have an expiration on the overlay itself where it would revert back to the original zoning pre-overlay district.
Or we could do it by referendum, right? Because we could vote on it.
Is it there? Once you have a land use in place and a homeowner or the landowner owns it, if you modify his land use without his acknowledgement and approval, then you've taken what they used to call a taking and you've taken his rights away from him and that's against the law.
The Williams County did it last night. So...
Compensate somebody for it.
Right, right, right. Yeah, you gotta compensate for it.
Mr. Butler, I was actually gonna ask that question. Did they pass last night the five to one?
So the Williams County Board passed 22 to one vote to proceed forward with the 2040 land use plan, which includes what they call town and country, which is five, five acres to one lot and the unincorporated areas that are not in urban growth boundaries. The planning commission will vote on it Thursday night and then they, in May, they will start public hearing and rezoning for all those properties. So they're gonna rezone all those properties from RD1 to RD5. And so they, I think the 22 to one vote made it loud and clear, that's their position and their direction that they're gonna go into. And, and it was a very lengthy meeting that I sat in last night, but the way I kinda see it is two things are gonna happen, and this is my opinion only, that more people are gonna request annexation and so they're gonna try and cling to the cities and try and, because the, the the value of the land on the outside unincorporated just drops significantly of what a developer's gonna wanna pay, because the lot yield is gonna be lower. And so they're gonna ask for annexation into these municipalities. And then also I think there's a big mass development on that eastern side of Franklin and then incorporated area. Those developers that will no longer be able to go there, I think are gonna start looking elsewhere. And I would imagine that Fairview is gonna be more appealing on the list, because Williams County only has so much left now that the unincorporated is gonna be, you know, cut off or capped, so. It's gonna, it's gonna be interesting to see what it does for the shift of development movement on that side of town.
I got about 30 minutes through the meeting before I came here. I had to stop the video, so I just wasn't sure what happened.
It was split right down the middle, one side of the room saying, don't devalue my land. The other side said town and country, save the rural Williams County land. So it was an interesting meeting to hear. They talked about coronavirus, they, the county borrowed 100 million last night because the interest rates are so low on bonds right now, so bored. If y'all need to borrow any money soon, they said right now is the time to do it. All right, sorry, just keep rambling on. Anything else from for Micah? City engineer, Mr. Blackburn.
Nothing on discussion information, just wanna folks in Nashville that were damaged in Milton, Tennessee, tornadoes last week. There's a lot of people that are hurting right now and just need to be kept in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter. Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commission members, Commissioner Burks.
Thank you, everyone, for being here and thank you for the work you do. I know it's not always the easiest for the most fun, but I appreciate it.
Sir, Ms. Shulis?
Nothing important from me. I did hear on good authority that the Waffle House is supposed to start this summer. I'd heard July 2021, but it's, apparently they're finishing up a build in another county and then they're gonna come here next. So that's just what I hear.
I think that's what they told our building department, that they had pushed us to 2021. They're just not ready to do this yet, yeah. But they have a building permit, so. Anything else? Mr. Jenkins?
On item three of new business, when we were sitting there discussing with the developer, Mr. Keeler, I believe was his name. I just, I'm thankful that people bring forth stuff like that and point out errors or imperfections in our, in our ordinances. It's what allows us to actually improve this kind of stuff. So thank you for having the discussion. I know he's not here, but you know, thank you for bringing that to us.
Sir, Mr. Power? Thank you, sir. Mr. Kelly?
Nothing tonight.
Qualls? Mayor Blade?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Nothing tonight.
And I have nothing. I'll entertain. So moved.